They're up in arms because the channel went in our trunk.
Good evening and welcome to the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Northampton County Council meeting. Could I have Mr. John Cusick in green please read the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Zemba, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Cusick.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Sargoy Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of March third, twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Thank you. Next, I'd like Ms. Carla Hickey, Lily Campbell, Cara Dobsovic, Alena Patnod, and Sarah Ribau to please come up to receive a proclamation because we have a special birthday today.
What? Uh, nope, just stand right by the microphone. Sorry. This is, is, this is okay?
I have no idea.
This can't be right.
This is a proclamation recognizing one hundred and ten years of service and the Girl Scouts of America. Whereas on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, it marks the one hundred and tenth anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most impactful leadership program for girls in the world. And since their start, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service and civic engagement. And whereas Girl Scouts works to champion the ambitions, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls to confidently pursue their passions and make the world a better place. And during a time where girls are experiencing increased levels of anxiety, stress, loneliness, and depression, Girl Scouts provides community, consistency, and connection for girls, and is a safe pavement in all the uncertainties. And whereas girls say that Girl Scouts support their mental health and is an accepting, safe space where they feel free to be themselves, and where leaders and other girls are sources of support during difficult times, and especially in the time of COVID nineteen, Girl Scouts plays an indispensable role in engaging girls in after-school and out-of-school programming and experiences. And whereas Girl Scouts engages girls of all grade levels in civics programming that deepens their understanding of democracy and government, prepares them for a lifetime of civic engagement, and offers girls programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, developing invaluable life skills. And whereas Gold Award Girl Scouts take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on a community by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. Gold Award Girl Scouts in Northampton County last year completed various projects, such as leading a team to create seafell pillows for the comfort of chemotherapy patients, and an environmental project protecting bird habitats at Jacobs Bird Park. And whereas today, more than fifty million women trailblazers, visionaries, and leaders are Girl Scout moms who have made the world a better place. Whereas Girl Scouts of Eastern PA is the largest serving organization in Pennsylvania that builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. GSCEP serves more than a thousand one hundred girls in partnership with over seven hundred volunteers in Northampton County. Now therefore be it resolved that for all the above-mentioned reasons, Northampton County Council recognizes the service and integrity shown by one hundred and ten years of Girl Scouts of the United States.
I just want to, I want to comment too. I'm really proud to see the Girl Scouts here today. I was a Girl Scout until I was a senior in high school. I continued working at Camp Mosewood and Camp Woodhaven. And so you serve a place in my heart because I feel like the Girl Scouts really helped me to be the leader that I am today and the advocate. And so I'm sure that these girls here are in good hands.
Yes, these two are quite shy, but we'd like to thank you for recognizing the Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania. Like you said, we're the largest one in Pennsylvania. I believe we're the eighth-largest in the country. For one hundred and ten years, we've spent a lot of, we had a lot of scouts, volunteers, and leaders spending countless hours, not only participating in their communities, but learning valuable life skills to help these girls become leaders and changers of the world for tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. I wish you had brought the leftover cookies. You could have made us very happy tonight.
Could I take a picture of them?
You sure can. Bring them right in here.
Do they want to go back there and then come here?
Come around front.
Then we're all wearing green, most of us, some of us.
Say what?
Yeah, one hundred and ten years, huh? Yeah, you're not going to get everybody. Oh, really?
I should have let them come up. I'll do that for the next person.
Oh, she's doing a panoramic, okay.
Smile and say some words. Thank you so much again. Congratulations.
Good job.
Next, Safe Digging Month is an awareness initiative sponsored by Pennsylvania eight-one-one for the month of April. Is Mr. Ryan Parish here? Would you come forward, please, sir? We have a proclamation that Mr. Myers will present to you.
Hey, I was tired of reading that last one.
I guess I got to turn this direction here with my big mouth. Proclamation designating the month of April two thousand twenty-two. We recognize the Pennsylvania eight-eleven Safety Digging Month. Whereas it's important to minimize damage to underground utility lines, damage to workers, environmental pollution, loss, utility services to Pennsylvania citizens. Whereas Pennsylvania One Call System Utility Service Information Center, celebrating forty-nine years of continuous service through the Commonwealth is key to preventing injuries and damage when excavating. Whereas Pennsylvania state law requires excavators, homeowners, given minimum three days notice before any digging because safe digging is an accident preventing injuries, protects the environment, prevents millions of dollars of damage. Whereas eight-eleven received close to one million fifty thousand excavation notifications in two thousand twenty-one, transmitted approximately six point seven million notifications to their members, facilities owners, operators, allowing essentially utilities, construction crews, to provide vital underground services, repair critical infrastructure to the community throughout Pennsylvania. Whereas the unique service provides easy one-call notification about construction, excavation projects which endanger workers, jeopardize utility lines, which promotes workplace and public safety and protecting the environment. Whereas by dialing eight-eleven at least three business days before digging home or contractors connecting to unique services notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipalities in which workers will perform by notifying eleven, eight-eleven of their intent to dig. Homeowners, contractors knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities themselves, their work crews, their neighbors, from unsafe digging practices to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council hereby designates the month of April two thousand twenty-two, Pennsylvania eleven, Safe Digging Month, to encourage all excavators, homeowners, Northampton County, to dial eight-one-one or one-eight-hundred-two-four-two-seventeen-seventy-six at least three business days before digging in order to know what's below, and more important, what may be obtained by visiting www-eight-eleven.org. Northampton County Council, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Congratulations. That was a long mouthful.
Wish to speak or say anything?
Yeah, just want to reiterate what he said. I know garden season is right around the corner, so just make sure you call ahead. If you're planning on digging on the weekends, make sure you call eight-one-one on Monday, Tuesday, so your lawful dig day can be by Friday, so you can start digging on the weekend.
Thank you so much. Thank you for our awareness on that subject.
Thank you.
There are several people that are in the hallway, so if people could adjust some seating to make room for those who may not have a seat, I would appreciate it. Aw, give a clap. I wanted them to stay. I didn't mean to kick the Girl Scouts out, Ron. They had the cookies. Ladies and gentlemen, I have no one signed in for courtesy of the floor this evening. Therefore, I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to address council. Before I do so, I will review the policy. You are allowed to speak. You get five minutes, no more. And I ask that because there's so many people here, that we keep the side conversations to a minimum so that we could hear what you're trying to say to us. This is a time for you to speak your piece. It's not a time to engage any dialogue with council. We're here to listen to what you have to say to us. So and for our clerk's sake, please identify your name and your address. And with that being said, is there anyone who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Come up one at a time and state your name, and I'll start the clock. Well, he's there.
Good evening. Benjamin Jac Nasrith-Burl.
Could you spell your last name, please?
J.A.C.Q.U.E.S. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution prevents the government from making laws which regulate an establishment of religion or that would prohibit the free exercise of religion or abridge the freedoms of speech, the freedom of the press, the freedom of assembly, or the right to petition the government for redress of grievances. It was adopted on December fifteenth, seventeen ninety-one, as one of the ten amendments that constitute the Bill of Rights. This was the first and most important amendment that was authored two hundred and thirty-four years ago, or excuse me, two hundred and thirty years ago. Good evening, respected county council members. I am a resident of Nazareth, Pennsylvania. I am also a resident of Northampton County and an American citizen. I am going before you today once again to follow up on a topic that I brought up at this very council meeting months ago that was not handled. The topic that I'm speaking of is my First Amendment. To this day, I have been blocked from commenting on the Northampton County Facebook page. This administration has blocked my freedom of speech on Facebook and on YouTube. Why has the commenting been turned off? Why are we not able to display our praises and/or grievances on these public forums? Does it bother this administration that the citizens of this county do not agree with them? Would my comments show the public that this isn't a perfect administration? And we know that there is no perfect administration because we are human beings. When is it a time where there can be so much secrecy? People notice. Why are we, we the people, being ostracized from these groups? We should be the ones that should be given the right to be heard on account of the fact that we show up. I am taking time out of my day, week, month, year to come to these meetings to hold this administration accountable, especially the county executive. All I want is to be heard, folks. That's all I want. I want my First Amendment, whether you like it or not. Is it too much to ask? Is everyone here too busy to check up on this? I mean, the administration's not doing that much anyway because of, if they were doing stuff, Greystale would be at a different position. Let me tell you something. We don't need the big three in the Lehigh Valley to tell us what we know. We have our own media outlets. We know what's going on. We know the details. We know our rights. All I want to do is express myself and move on with my life, but this administration is making it very difficult for me to do that because I am concerned about our citizens. Just know that we, the people, our patience is wearing thin. We won't be silenced by this tyrannical administration. I've got a Steve Lynch shirt on. Sue me.
No, no, sir, you have thirty minutes, thirty seconds.
I'm done.
Just wanted to give you a figure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Oh, but my last comment was, I have a Steve Lynch shirt on. Sue me. We, the people, have spoken.
Next, please. Just come on to the mic and identify your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Klingel. And the address is sixty-eight Oak Lane, Northampton.
Go ahead.
Could you spell your last name, please?
K.L.I.N.G.E.L. I'm a twenty-two-year-and-a-half-years-retiree of Greystale, but have been working the last seven years as a part-time worker. Greystale at one time was a great place to work. It was family and teamwork was in abundance. Sadly, I cannot say that for the present conditions. Some people would say that the changes when COVID came along, but this is not true. The reason I retired seven years ago was I could already see the handwriting on the wall. Years ago, administrators cared about their employees. I can remember an administrator we had, had been there for years, would make his rounds daily to say good morning to the staff and ask how things were going. That all stopped when we started to have a revolving door of administrators. Our director of nursing and assistant director of nursing would know their nursing staff by name and would make routine rounds on the floors. This has not and does not exist now. The morale of your present employees now is terrible. You have lost so many employees, and I say good employees, because they no longer could endure the abuse. Let's take some facts. An eight-hour shift is four hundred and eighty minutes, sixty minutes of which is supposed to be, as per their contract, two fifteen-minute breaks and a half an hour lunch. Those breaks are nonexistent to the employees that care about our residents. They have no time to take those breaks. You have floors working with one, possibly two aides on a shift. Now let me do the calculation for you because if you have fifty residents, that means they have approximately eight minutes per patient, per shift. So that comes out to include their hygiene care for the residents, meals, feeding the residents, collecting the trays, answering call bells, refilling waters, and taking people to bathrooms. And there is also the thing that we have to have two people for mechanical lifts. And you can say, well, there's two nurses on the floor, but the nurses have their own responsibilities, meds, orders, paperwork, computer work. That is required of us, treatments, et cetera. All this, okay, we don't have the proper staff, you know, on there as far as amount of people. So if we have to work overtime for that to make up because we're trying to help the aides on the floor, we are then threatened that we are not supposed to be doing the overtime. But yet you can pay agency nurses sixty-five dollars an hour. And let's not forget the additional work. If a resident falls or has to go to the hospital, that's all additional work for the workers on the floor. Your Greystale employees are not robots. They are people who want to take care of our residents, most of them in their last years of life. Now I'm going to give my suggestions that I feel would be helpful to the whole situation there. First of all, be honest with your employees. A lot of people are wondering if the end motive here is to close a Greystale. Second, a change in administration with people who want to be team players and know their staff and not belittling or threatening them. Teamwork is predicated on trust and communication is necessary in optimal success. Number three, increase wages that are competitive with other places. Number four, form a committee to discuss issues that are plaguing the facility. And I'm not talking necessarily meetings with the administrators there. I'm asking any one of you to go to Greystale at any given time, unannounced, go to a floor and see what's going on for the sake that you can then see what's going on in that building. Not announcing yourself or anything else, go on your own reconnaissance to go in and visit. Fifth, bring back your Jerry aides. And for those who don't know or remember Jerry aides, these were mostly high school students who came to work at three forty-five to seven o'clock, and they did the menial task, give out fresh water, restock the rooms with gloves, assist passing out the trays, collecting the trays. And at sometimes after the meal or when they have in-between time to visit with the residents that don't have families. Fifth, bring back the NA twos. These were male assistants that assisted the NA ones. Number seven, offer to your employees, offer to employees that would be willing to return to come back to Greystale. You have some employees that are no longer there that would be willing to come back if the situation there is better. And most importantly, let's give our residents the dignity and care they most rightly deserve. Treat and care about your staff because they are truly the ones out there giving their hearts, souls, and love to the residents. So we care, do you?
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Matthew Walter. I'm from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Last name spelt W.A.L.T.E.R. So the reason why I showed up here today, first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Myers. Yesterday, when some of the sheriff's deputies came out and spoke, I commend you on not allowing a certain person in this room to scapegoat out of it. I really appreciate that. I know your son personally, and I know the man that that young man is, and it comes from a great father like that. Secondly, as far as the sheriff's deputies, I would like to commend all the sheriff's deputies for actually coming out, speaking up, and telling the truth. I know that their jobs are at risk because, let's be honest, in this country, as of late, it's not okay to have freedom of speech. Now, I want to touch on Greystale. Not this last, not this last press conference that was held there, but the press conference before that, I had the luxury of speaking to a couple people that actually live there. One of which informed me that they had to call nine-one-one so that they could get their linens changed because of defecating on themselves and not being able to get there. Now that's not saying that the people that work at Greystale are bad people. That is just bad leadership. Now, another thing that was brought to me by a wonderful man, a World War II veteran. He informed me that there's a beautiful tent that I could see with my own eyes sitting out in the parking lot. That tent, don't quote me on this, I was informed it was between ten and fifteen thousand dollars for that tent. That tent seen one event, and that was a photo op for our current executive. Now, that tent has not seen it being lifted again since that, since that actual photo op. I think that's atrocity. Now, let's talk about the election. Now the election, I personally sat here and was bullied by the current executive and his counterpart who just left the room, telling us that we were not able to see what we were there to see. They made us stand six, ten feet away from the paper, and I can barely see Mr. Spadoni's tag right there, but that's how far that we had to stand. How are we supposed to see that? But for a short period of time, I was able to see stuff, and I saw stuff that was not ethically right. I saw it with my own eyes. I saw it with my own eyes. Lastly, I'm not going to be like normal liberals that I see in society today where I say, the president's not my president. I'm not going to say this executive is not my president, not my executive, I should say. He is, unfortunately. Probably not legally, but he is. So I'm calling for you to step down and resign because that is what everybody wants you to do. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Hello, my name is Tina Benner. I live in Bethlehem. Tina Benner. I live in Bethlehem. I also have documents here.
You could give it to our clerk, and she can pass them out to us so that you can have your time to speak. She's gonna, there's five packets, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Right.
Just wait a minute.
Tonight, or can they?
It's just documents proving some of the stuff I'm about to say.
Okay, so we don't need them to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay, first, I want to start by saying the letter I wrote and emailed all of you. It was published in the Valley Ledger. After that was the press conference, which WFMZ did a chop job on. But I also emailed you the full version of the YouTube video. I want to bring up McClure's comment on the chop job version that we were all aware, that we were all aware of the deadline of the mandate on the vaccine. And we had, and we had an opportunity to have a hearing. So to that statement, we did have a hearing to grieve the denials on January 31st, which then they had 10 days to reach a decision, and after the 10 days, they requested an extension to February 28th, at which time they denied their grievances and terminated everyone the same day. That is being terminated on the spot with no notice. So this is the slimy stuff this administration does. Yes, we knew of the deadline, but we had grievances filed to appeal the decision, and they strung us along because we were able to continue working because we had a pending request. So they pushed it to the end of the deadline to make their decision and deny and terminate us. They were also, there were also many that didn't submit an exemption that left in December, which is what they mentioned previously, but didn't mention the employees they terminated. I find it hard to believe that no one qualified. How they decided that our sincerely held religious beliefs did not qualify and provided us with no explanation how they decided we were not sincere. On the subject of the wages and staffing issues, as I has also stated in my letter, 11.5 increase over three years, which would only been 4.5% for the first year, which isn't even a dollar on our already low base rate, which I also gave examples in my letter. So starting, the starting rate at Greystale is 1461 for CNA. Nine years is 1513, and someone with 21 years of experience is only at $17.97. Cedar Brook is starting at 1873. Greystale gives you 75 cents for weekdays worked and $3 extra for weekends. But if you do the math, it's still under what Cedar Brook starts at. And actually, a person that worked secretary for over 20 years of service is not even getting a dollar more for what Cedar Brook is starting at. I can say I had two interviews that offered $20 plus other incentives. So there are other places that are offering more, and they are not agency positions. The pay needs to be increased for all departments. Everyone's workload has been increased, and we're not being compensated for it. I can tell you, I've been in contact with employees that left Greystale and went to Cedar Brook, and their staffing is not as bad as Greystale. They have one aide for 10 to 11 residents at most. Greystale usually has one aide for 20 to 25 residents. I remember before this administration, we would get Cedar Brook employees because it used to be a good place to work. Now you have Greystale employees leaving to go to Cedar Brook. And McClure says it's not about the money. He previously stated about a clause in the contract proposal that we didn't like, which was if we call out sick, we would have to call HR to report if we leave our house other than going to a medical appointment or the pharmacy, which is, yes, absolutely ridiculous. He is part right. That is not all about the money. It is also about the treatment of the staff. So honestly, my opinion on a daycare may be a good idea, but until it would be ready, there might not be any staff left. There have been some employees that had to leave in the beginning of the pandemic because they had babysitting issues, and they would not work with them when they pleaded to go per diem, instead forcing them to resign. And there have been some employees going to nursing school that they wouldn't let them switch to go per diem. The staff are getting burned out physically and mentally. Then they have to deal with the harassment of the illegal mandates and getting written up for refusing their illegal mandates, calling everyone down one by one, pulling the staff from their floors as they were working short to get written up. There's their call-out policy, that if you call out on the weekend, they put you to work on your weekend off. They blame it on the pandemic and call-outs, but I can tell you, every time I got mandated, it was only for one to maybe three call-outs, which one week they tried to mandate me four days in a row. And each of those days, they had 12 to 14 open spots prior. This is chronic short staffing, and it is a violation of Act 102. They are trying to fill the hole in their schedule and saying it's for call-outs. It's constant harassment. I would advise anyone who stayed for these mandates or anyone who has gotten written up, since it is retaliation to get written for disciplinary action, I would advise them to file a complaint with Department of Labor. So it's not only about the money, but the treatment of the staff. Employees are tired of the harassment and the treatment and have been leaving in record number. They are tired of the conditions. I can tell you, two employees that already got other jobs and are waiting to get their notice. Another slimy thing they do to show their appreciation was, as I said at the press conference, an employee worked her Christmas and was out sick, was out for New Year's with COVID. She didn't call out sick. She was not allowed to come to work, and they didn't pay her holiday pay for the new year, even though...
You're at time. Thank you.
So they didn't pay her holiday pay, even though she worked Christmas. I can tell you, people are afraid to speak up in fear of retaliation, and there have been comments made by former employees that if the DON was no longer there, they would come back to work. And if this administration, including the DON, don't start respecting and appreciating their staff, they will not have any staff left. And not saying fake words, as the saying goes, actions speak louder than words. And I found it funny when Jennifer Sturking was asked how many employees, and she could not answer but knew how many residents. But again, maybe she does not know because of the amount of staff leaving in flocks besides everyone they terminated. So I would ask how many people quit in the past couple months, and if you actually get a correct number, that number should tell you something. These residents are suffering because of the poor administration, and no, it's not as bad everywhere else, and they say they can't compete with hospitals. How about first just compete with other county homes and start doing something to retain the employees that you have left that have been devoted for many years? Because they are losing longtime employees, and it's more about the treatment for them than it is the money. As some also retired early that would have otherwise stayed on longer. I just had an interview today, and it started at $20. And when I asked about staffing, they said they used to work with six aides, but now average four aides, and on a bad day, have three aides for 33 residents. So even on their bad day, their patient-to-ratio is better than Greystale's on a good day. And the same for Cedar Brook. When talking to employees, their ratio has been one aide to 10 to 11 residents on a bad day. Something needs to change, and it starts with administration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Please state your name and address.
Kathleen Harris, Kunkel Town, PA. I am a former employee that worked at Greystale Nursing Home. My religious exemption was denied on February 28th, and I was terminated over the phone. In the very beginning of the pandemic, I worked on the COVID unit for months before anything was mentioned about getting tested. We were considered heroes. There was no vaccine until the summer of 21, 2021. Despite all this exposure to COVID and being unvaccinated and getting tested regularly, I never got COVID. There was no, no issues being unvaccinated until August of 2021. I am being forced to get vaccinated, and this goes against my religious beliefs. I would like to know who these people think they are deciding that, that what our religious beliefs are. My belief is held firmly that I cannot accept this vaccination. We are created in the image of God. My request is held on firm religious grounds. My body is a temple unto God. My body is to honor God and be a living sacrifice. God must be obeyed over man. I ask for this religious exemption to this mandate because of my faith in God through His Son, Jesus Christ. I have a family and strive to protect them. Lamont McClure and the administration has made my life miserable. He has added worries and stress, deprived me of income and support. And I cheerfully did my job assisting those who can't help themselves. In return, they stripped me of everything I worked for. All we want to do is be back with the residents and preserve our jobs.
Anyone else? Okay. And I'd ask, hold your applause or your reactions till they're finished, so that we could hear them. It doesn't come off. Could she's just, yeah, it picks up a lot.
Try to talk and see if it...
Okay. My name is Lynn Gerber, G-E-R-B-E-R. And I've been a resident of Greystale for over six years. I'm Speaker of the House there, President of the Resident Council, and I also sell Gertrude Hawk candy bars for the Friends of Greystale from October to April. So you can see, I keep myself busy. That being said, I want to tell you I'm brutally honest and despise liars. I loved Greystale when I got there on August 25th, 2015. My daughters showed me around and introduced me to people. And there were a lot of activities and events happening at that time. Now, they go for ice cream. You have to stay in the bus. Or they go to Walmart or Dollar Tree Plus to buy things that you need. They are trying to hire people, but they need to, to up the pay for the residents, or the employees, I mean. Yes, they've gotten hazard pay, but that doesn't do anything for them. It's very low. And why were county businesses giving $15,000 because they were shut down during the COVID? And no money went to Greystale? None. I know the union is negotiating a pay raise for them, which is 4.5% for two years and 2.5% for the third year. That's nothing. We had good people, CNAs, but they, they quit, or they were getting fired, because now they have to have 100% vaccinated. And President Biden is trying to get 4.1 hours per patient, and we're lucky if we could get 2.4 hours right now. Off. Good luck.
It says, often now, he wants to raise minimum wages to $15 an hour for...
Flipping burgers?
Flipping burgers. I think people who work as CNA should get a heck of a lot more than, because they don't flip burgers. They are good care, taking good care of your family members or parents, or parents and disabled. Can anyone see yourself in this predicament? This can't be happening in the United States, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Then they will have to hire some with eight hours of computer training to come to healthcare fields and finish their license, practicing on units. Not me. I had a guy come into my room who completed this course. Never again. He sort of washed, then went to dress me, and I can say is, oh, my God. He put my bra on backwards, and I said, "My boobs are up here, not on my back. I'm sorry."
Well, she's honest, right?
Beat her in the right way, hurried out of my room. I rang the call bell, and a nurse came in, finished dressing me. She said that they are aware and under me and hooked me up, then got the other CNA to help get me in my power chair. Do you understand the humiliation I went through? So that being said, I will never let a trainee touch me again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for helping, huh?
Hold on, hold on, I'm behind you. Don't run me over. I won't.
State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Shalonda Mundle. I live in Palmer Township, North Hampton County.
I'm sorry, can you spell your last name again?
Mundle, M-U-N-D-L-E.
Thank you.
Start? Okay, I originally started at Greystale as a CNA in 2011. I then went back to school, got my nursing license, and became an LPN. I worked block, part-time, full-time, and then eventually ended up as a per diem employee. The reason why I went per diem is because that was the only way I can get extra money, because they pay per diems at a higher rate. I was terminated on February 28th because I am unvaccinated. I have a problem with that. The reason why I have a problem with that is because I was good enough to work through COVID when you needed me. I was good enough to work through COVID when you had nobody else, when nobody was coming in the door. But now, all of a sudden, because you want money, you need money, then I'm not good enough to work for you. I was on the floors as a per diem employee. You float where nobody else wanted to go. That is where I was put. Agency was put in better positions than I was. I was actually told to move off of a floor one night and let an agency nurse work there because she was pregnant. I'm sorry, I have four kids. Pregnancy is not a handicap. If you can't do the job, then you shouldn't be there. That's just how I feel about it. My other complaint was, we went for grievance, okay? We were told we were going to get 10 days. If they knew they were going to get rid of us, they should have said that. They bought time, bought time, bought time, and kept us there working. Myself got put on the tower floor where I had 48 residents. Out of my 48 residents, 30 of them were COVID positive. There was nowhere to put these people, so I was forced to just put on an N95 and deal with it. Two nights later, I had three people going out in the morning, two for dialysis, and one had an early appointment. I had an aide that was nine months pregnant, one aide. I called down, I said, "I have three people going out in the morning. It's me and a pregnant aide." The answer I got was, "Do the best you can." That seems to be the answer you get all the time when you call the supervisors. You know why? Because, I'm sorry, we have international supervisors. We have people there who do not know what they're doing at all. They don't know how to unblock a tube. Somebody falls on the floor, you call them, they say, "Just pick them up." How do they look, Shalonda? Well, it's not my job to decide. You're supposed to come here and look at them. We're a little too busy. We're all on the floors. Where is my help? When I need help, I don't even have help. I have nobody to go to. Administration was called in a couple months ago to work as aides and nurses on units. Well, let me tell you, I followed one of them, and it was horrible. I had four people that were still awake. One was soaked with BM, never changed, never put to bed. I'm coming in at 11 o'clock to put this person to bed that is saturated. Why? It makes absolutely no sense. So if you can't do the job as an administrator, where you used to be a CNA, how do you expect for us to do the job? We're not octopus. We have two hands and two feet trying to do the best we can. On 3 to 11 on the floor, I had 19 feeds. How am I supposed to feed 19 residents with two people? With two people, what does that tell you? Our residents aren't getting proper nutrition. Our residents aren't getting proper nutrition. We can't feed them, we don't have the staff. Why don't we have the staff? Because you're not getting treated right and the money is not right, the administration doesn't care. And guess what their answer is? Do the best you can. That is not the answer, when this is where people are living. This is somebody's mother, somebody's father, somebody's grandma. You would not want your people to be treated this way. And we come in and we try to do the best way, best we could. I didn't go to nursing school to do this to people. I understand some people look at nursing home as the end of life, it doesn't matter, it's still the quality of life. I don't care if I'm 90 years old, give me the best five, six, 10 years that I'm going to have. It's all about quality, not with this administration. With this administration, it's about money. That's all it's about, they don't care about us, they don't care if I did 16 hours, they don't care if I did four or five doubles. I punch out sometimes 7:05, 7:08. I'm getting a text message on my way out the door, can you come to work? I just worked 16 hours. You're getting a text message, we need you, Shalonda, can you come in? Not only me, for a lot of us, I have about six people behind me right now that was all terminated. If I'm willing to work through COVID unvaccinated, if I'm a willing body, why not let me work? Is my body my choice? If I'm willing to put myself in COVID, which I have, why not use me? I'm a willing vessel, why not use me? It makes no sense. So you got rid of 15-plus people that was willing and we were working in it, for what reason? For money. My body, my choice. If I'm willing to work through COVID, why not use me? Obviously, ain't nobody else coming in, so why not use the people you have? Was it a good decision? I don't think so. When they stand up here last week or two weeks ago and questions was asked, how much money are they getting made? How are your employees? Oh, you start stuttering, right? You're not stuttering, you know, you know the answer, you just don't want to be honest. But you want us to work under you and you're not honest with your employees? I don't think so. I'm not here to badger anybody, I understand we all have responsibilities and it's a hard position. But if you can't take the heat, then you need to get out the kitchen.
Hi, my name is Carol Miklos, 3795 Cedar Drive, North Hampton, Pennsylvania. Miklos, M I K L O S. My name is Carol Miklos and I was employed by Greysdale for approximately seven years. Please bear with me because if I become emotional, it's because a tradition which I had held dearly and worked very hard to obtain was taken away from me through my, through no fault on my own. With all of you here, what you have heard tonight, let me ask you. Would you willing to put your loved ones in Greysdale at this time? Please, raise your hands, be honest with yourselves. Greysdale is extremely understaffed, leaving residents to be neglected not only physically but also emotionally. Repositioning two, few hours is not an option, leading to increased pressure sores and wounds. Residents are at the mercy of exhausted and limited staff for daily needs. The inability to get the residents out of bed leaves them feeling abandoned and forgotten, to stare at the same thing day after day. Residents who relied on assistance with toileting are now full care due to staff's inability to toilet in a timely manner. Let's talk about emotional support, there is none. I, as an LPN, at my age, found myself able to relate to the residents' needs, sitting at the bedside, stroking one's hair, listening to their needs and offering emotional support and reassurance. This was the part of my job I truly loved, and the ability to make a difference in one's life. All this was taken away from me and the residents when more responsibilities were added. As an LPN, I'm expected to administer medications, complete treatment, assess residents for changes in conditions, call the doctor, family, with any new issues, put in orders, complete Medicare and daily charting, help with meals, toileting, leaving no time to be a nurse. I would walk into rooms, push pills and move on due to limited time and demanding responsibilities. On any occasions, I would enter the room, residents would ask to be changed, repositioned or just have somebody to listen to them. I would tell the residents, sorry, hold on. I would enter rooms with residents, ask to be changed, repositioned or just someone to be there for them. I would tell the residents someone would be with them, knowing I was lying to them because staff was trying to complete first rounds and they would not be there for any time soon. This is not nursing, this is not what I believe in, this is neglect. I consider myself to be a stellar nurse and a committed employee, but now because I chose to stand up for my religious and moral beliefs, I was terminated without just cause. I was never interviewed to explain my religious exemption, nor was I given the chance to resign or be terminated on the 20th, like, on the 28th, like other employees. What gives you the right to question my beliefs? County employees should come out from behind their desks and volunteer an eight-hour shift at Greysdale. Then they might understand the struggles that we're going through, see the pain, the depression in the residents' eyes, the increased failure to thrive because their basic needs are not being met. Waters are not refilled at every shift, residents are not being properly fed, leading to dehydration and nutritional, limited nutritional intake. A resident cannot live on supplements alone. Residents would question, will I be getting a shower today? I can't remember the last time I had one. Sheets were soiled with food, liquids and bodily secretions. I must commend all the aides and nurses, they put forth in an effort for all the residents to do the best of their ability, but faltered due to no fault of their own. I worked through COVID for two years, I was diligent with keeping myself safe outside of Greysdale as well as in. My floor northeast two was closed due to inability to staff. A floor where you were, a floor where your ability to protect yourself from COVID-19 was manageable. We had doors to close and computers to work behind them. We had multiple areas to eat and maintain a safe dishes. I was transferred to Tower Seven, a floor with an open area concept with nowhere to hide from COVID. So being short-staffed, I found myself cutting corners to care for residents and completing my duties. All computers are right behind a wall separating the nurses' station from the residents' common area with no Plexid asks to help deter the spread of the virus. Residents would unknowingly come to the nurses' station, cough on staff and spread the virus. I would sit at the computer trying to do my documentation, to hydrate, to eat my lunch, answer phones and all at the same time. There is no complete task, there's no time to complete all tasks and take lunch or break on the same day, especially if you're doing double shifts, which I did on a regular basis. Management has doors to protect them, they can unmask, go care for their nutritional needs and complete their duties with limited concerns. I hold Greysdale accountable for my COVID infection, for not taking the extra precautions to keep things safe. The break room was located between both sides of the unit where staff was, would not be able to keep six-foot distance when eating. It was also a cut-through to form from one side of the unit to the other. Greysdale management and North Hampton County have sold out their employees and residents and brought in residents to benefit themselves. I always taught that money is the root of all evil, and this is a prime example of it. It does not matter how many lives were destroyed as long as the narrative is reached. I am asking you to reconsider your exemptions, our exemptions, not for us, but for our family, the residents we love. Thank you for your time and attention in this matter.
Okay. Yes, how you doing? My name is Glenn Mora, I live in East Stroudsburg. I won't read both pages, but I'll just kind of touch up on some of the other stuff that wasn't mentioned or was mentioned.
If there's something you want to give to the clerk to copy?
No, no, there's nothing right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here to make you aware of this administration and keep them honest. I request that you guys, the board, investigate this administration for the past three to four years of declining staff and behavior towards all nursing staff. I request that you guys check exit interviews from not just aides and LPNs and RNs, but also supervisors too. You're going to find a lot of dirt there. Prior administrations did not have the funding that this administration had, okay? They had millions, hundreds, millions of dollars, they're not using it correctly. They, my staff behind me explained that. I am still currently employed because I was forced to take the vaccine, which it's against my will, I feel. But I have a pregnant wife at home and I have a family to feed, and I really didn't want to do it, but I had no choice. This really was their agenda. This started prior to COVID, don't let them use COVID as a scapegoat. They've been working on this and I can tell you why. Dawn has a history at two hospitals prior to this, both of them closed. And now Greysdale is almost halfway there. Also, Dawn has brought RN supervisors from Eastern Hospital to Greysdale and 99% of them had resigned or were terminated. She also sent out, Dawn, the Director of Nursing, also sent out an email stating that Greysdale would not be sold in totality. What is that saying exactly? Each unit, we have six units closed down within the last year and a half. So their agenda was before COVID. I ask you guys to rescind all these 15, 20, 25-year employees, their jobs back. McClure, no Third Circuit Court or university should be the factor over our beliefs. Our movement won't stop here. You've heard from officers yesterday and today from current and terminated employees. We will continue until this administration is held accountable, they should be held accountable. Let's get back to normal, regardless of political party. Let's do what's right for the residents and staff alike, then the people would want to work here again. Let's rescind these heroes, their jobs back, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor?
Hello, my name is Samantha Ely, 1410 Johnston Drive, Bethlehem, PA. The only reason I came up here is because I wanted to state that McClure stated that our exemptions weren't adequate or met the requirements. With that being said, I don't understand why everybody else is finding jobs at nursing homes and it's being accepted. My exemption is accepted at any other facility, I could get a job tomorrow. So I think you guys should probably reconsider and look over the exemptions yourself because they were wrongfully terminated. Thank you.
Let me reset, go ahead, say your name, I'll reset.
My name is Josh Harris, Moore Township. I don't have a whole lot to say, I didn't work at Greysdale. I'm not a resident, but the stuff coming out of Greysdale is terrible. You know, the fact that you fired all these employees, or this administration, I should say, fired all these employees and then the very next day released a press release that, which is not in itself a lie, but all of a sudden they were at 100% vaccination rate for Greysdale employees. I personally find that disturbing because that obviously is not what happened. They terminated everyone to get to that number. But yet that's what we broadcast to the general public and this was brought up before in a public forum that we can't comment on. So you've trampled on people's constitutional rights. And I just think that's wrong, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at courtesy of the floor?
David McMurtry, Borough of Nazareth, M C M U R T R I E. I just wanted to step forward and express my gratitude for all of these Greysdale employees and residents and thank them for their service. They deserve a lot more than that and accountability will come to this administration, I can tell you. My second point is to the sheriff's deputies that are in this room that were present yesterday and every single one of them that work for this county. I just want to say the same thing to you guys and girls, thank you for your service. Accountability will come, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening?
Good evening. Steve Lynch, North Hampton, PA, L Y N C H. I just hope tonight, you know, FMZ is here, maybe we'll get it right tonight. What's been done to these people is really an atrocity. I'm a concerned citizen of North Hampton County, as I stated the other week. I'm here as a concerned citizen of North Hampton County. What you've heard today, we heard last week, we heard back in October. This stuff is not going away, it's getting worse. The only thing that could be done, because obviously the administration is not focused on any kind of solutions to the problem at Greysdale, amongst many other departments, I'd also like to say last night, the sheriff's deputies, you have to understand, these people right now that still work for this county are under threat. They're under threat by this administration, talk to them. They're under threat of losing their jobs. He may deny it, but it's not the fact. The sheriff last night, our current sheriff, lied to you. A man was assaulted out front of that, of our courthouse. Eastern cops were here. Go look at the, you pull up the 911 tapes. And I encourage everybody to do this. We have an administration that just lies at every turn, no accountability whatsoever. Greysdale is falling in shambles, everything is short-staffed. And again, you can use COVID as an excuse, but leadership, you got to lead the charge to get the solutions done. We have, how many tens of millions of dollars are going to be coming in for COVID money this year? Where's that money going to go? I would highly encourage everybody up on this council to pay attention to every single dollar of where this money is going to go. I just don't understand how we can, at this point, take care of our people better. How are we firing people when we're short? It makes no sense. The other thing that was brought up tonight was religious exemptions being denied. I'm assuming Lamont McClure thinks that he has the ability to deny these things and has the ability to say what religious beliefs are good and not good. Isn't that discrimination? I see a lot of lawsuits coming to this county because of the religious exemptions, and they should. The county should be sued because of your decisions. Also, to prove you were lied to last night, under normal circumstances, these meetings have two sheriffs, one at the front door and one up here, we have five to six, that's because of me. That's never, nothing ever been done before, no violence, nothing. But you like to really claim that that's going to happen. This has to stop, this county needs to get put back on track. The council is going to have to do something significant because we know the administration is not going to do it. Do something, please, these people deserve it, the employees deserve it, these sheriff's deputies are incredible. These employees at Greysdale are working hard. It's all right, he stared at me only once. So, he wouldn't debate me, don't forget, he cowered it out three times. So, please do something, please do something for these employees, please do something for these residents because it's not going to get done on the administrative side, please help them, thank you.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Once, twice? Courtesy of the floor is now closed, thank you. Next, Mr. McClure, do you have a report? I would ask that there be order in the council chambers, please. We listen very intently to you, so please let us conduct business in the same manner.
In the interest of time tonight, your meeting is extended. I don't have any report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council for Mr. McClure? Mr. Lot?
Yeah, this mandate, this was not a county mandate, correct?
That's correct.
This was a mandate by the federal government, well aware by all people involved in Greysdale. I mean, I find, I listen intently to these people speak and I feel for a lot of what they're saying, but this was, this was something that the federal government came down with. This wasn't a county decision, number one. Number two, it's very, I, 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 I'm not going to go into that, but it's, it's, as a council person, I'll speak for myself, as a council person, I'll speak for myself, I want to hear people, but it's very difficult up here because you have to split politics from issues. And a lot of it seems politics. So anyway, I just wanted to ask you, you had no decision about that mandate? That was a federal mandate, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Gofredo.
How many employees applied for an exemption for the vaccine?
I don't know. 10, 15, maybe.
And did any get exemptions?
No.
And who decides the exemption status?
The HR.
HR, HR for the county.
Human resources. The county.
I, I, I.
I would like to ask our solicitor. I believe there's arbitration. I'm a union person myself and I believe there's a lot of arbitration going on. So I think we as a council, I believe all these fires are being arbitrated. I don't know if the administration knows that, but what is our liability here discussing with the fact that, is there any? Can we have these discussions with them arbitrating these decisions?
It has always been my procedure that the right to speak is paramount. That being said, it sometimes is limited and frankly, I don't think we're there yet.
So.
Yeah, he didn't ask about any specific arbitrations. I think it, you know, so.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Is there? No, I'm just trying to pick my next questioning. Is the consideration, I don't want to get into the topic of the union negotiations, but a lot has evolved and obviously the vaccine is a very hot topic. But with what we're seeing with people who are vaccinated are now able to currently get, is there any reconsideration as far as looking at the exemption status for, you know, we are obviously, it's very desperate needs at Greystale. Is there any consideration at all or would there be any reconsideration at this point for looking at exemption statuses for the possibility of getting back nurses or getting back any kind of staff at Greystale?
No.
No?
No.
I know. Are you done, Mr. Gofredo? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Executive, with the vaccine mandate and the mandate, as Mr. Lot has pointed out, is federal. Is that linked to funds and therefore arbitrary based on the funds that would come to the nursing home if we did not support the mandates? Or is it simply that there is no option at all in following the mandate because of the legal impact from the federal government? Could you?
So that's, so the answer is both. There is a financial implication in that if you are penalized to the extent that CMS determines that you're out of compliance, you will not receive medical assistance.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is the Department of Health, who is act, the Pennsylvania Department of Health is acting as the surveyor for CMS, also has the power to cite for not being in compliance. So there's two, there's two angles to it.
So the answer is yes, that the mandates could be set aside if the county were willing to not accept the funds from the federal government or the monies that would come or be willing to risk the potential citations and penalties that could be impacted.
Theoretically. But you're talking about, as you know, tens of millions of dollars. The home, the home, the home wouldn't be able to run.
Potentially, yeah. Okay.
Other questions, Mr. Brown? Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
You know, as a form of education, excuse me, I have a bad cold. This is to protect others, not me tonight. What you just said, a great deal, and I know CMS, our nursing home particularly Greystale, is overwhelmingly, and always has been funded by Medicaid because of the cases we.
I believe our case mix is up to eight, Jen's here, she's in the, up to 85% Medicaid only.
Right.
And Greystale has about 50% of the MA patients in the whole county.
Yeah.
So it would be devastating to us.
So I was going to say, I, without discounting anything said tonight, because I was listening to everybody, at this point in time, if we jeopardize that flow of funds, I don't, Greystale as it looks today could not exist.
Oh, Greystale would cease to exist.
Right. I just, I just wanted to, I, I just, it's important funding streams and I'm not saying I'm pleased with them, but this is the game we're in when it comes to who gives us money and how we get it and how we run things. But I just wanted you to clarify the percentage wise to given, to let people know, this is somehow how we can be pulled in because as the old saying goes, he holds, he who holds the gold makes the rules. And for us, the feds hold the gold, which goes to the state and then comes to us.
When you're, it's 85, at least 85%.
I thought so. It was then, back then it was too. So thank you. I'm done. That's all I want to know.
Mr. Myers?
You mentioned CMS. What is CMS for the regular people?
The Center for Medicaid Services. It's the, the arm of, I believe it's the Department of Human Serv, the National Department of Human Services, right? Yeah. That administers medical facilities in the country, including long-term care facilities.
So this is part of the Biden mandate, is that correct? When he said that we'd lose funding if we didn't get in line with vaccination, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Any other questions from council? Any other comments, Mr. McClure? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, sorry.
What is the current nursing hours per day for the facility?
It's, it's bouncing around 2.4, 2.4. Yeah, 2.4 or 5.
So the risk that the home also faces is because we're not meeting the minimum standard, that the license could be pulled by the same agencies that you're talking about that could penalize you also for not meeting the standards, at which point the entire facility would be shut down. All remaining jobs would be lost. Is that correct?
Well, as you know, there is a, a process by which you would have to go through the Department of Health. It's not one citation and you're shuttered. And because of COVID-19, they are.
Given some liberty.
There, yeah, there's been grace, significant grace, but it won't last forever and you're right about that. And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Gofredo.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I do, when John Brown said that, you know, we are talking about a pretty critical time here and I've had a number of nurses, a number of staff reaching out and they're all saying the same thing, that it's, you know, we're very close to being at the point where it's going to have to close. And I think it's pretty clear that the people, residents and staff are concerned about that. Is natural immunity even considered at this point? And if so, why not with what we're learning about it? And the, it's even more, the efficacy of it is considered to be greater than the vaccine. And I, I don't know what we're trying to do here because my grandmother was in Greystale, had COVID for six days without being notified, any family members. She was vaccinated. She died. She died because there was not enough staff there. So are we trying to save lives or are we trying to prove a point? And that's, you know, I feel like it is a very political. Please, please, I don't want to make this emotional or political, but the point is people are dying, whether it's COVID or whether it is neglect of care or lack of staff, whatever the reason is. And if Greystale closes, then more and more people are going to be put in the even worse position. So I think we need to be a little bit less obtuse and a little bit more opening to reasonable solutions. And I understand it is a federally mandated vaccine. Supreme Court ruled on it, but the lack, not one exemption? That means I believe you are being politically divisive and you're not allowing an open-minded approach to the solution. We good?
Thank you. Next we have, under old business. Could we please have order? If not, I'm going to clear the room. We have business to conduct, please. Thank you. Under old business, we have a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania to Lease Property Located at the Corner of Main and East Street in the Borough of West Easton, County of Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." Mr. Myers and Ms. Sarinski introduced this ordinance at the March 3, 2022 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this lease? Seeing and hearing none, is there any discussion of council regarding this lease? I believe we did discuss this yesterday at the Finance Committee meeting.
We did.
Let's call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any old business to discuss? Seeing and hearing none, we have new business, "The Introduction of an Ordinance Entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing Preparation and Submission of a Declaration of Taking and Related Documentation for a Portion of the Lands of Leview Victor Russo, Russo." Excuse me, I need someone to sponsor this ordinance.
I'll sponsor it.
Mr. Myers?
Second.
And Mr. Kuzic.
That's in Easton.
The public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the April 7, 2022 meeting. Next, we have consideration of the executive's appointments, resolution, area agency on aging, advisory board, children, youth and families advisory board, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
Certainly. Hope you can hear me okay. I've been taken to task for not using the mic. I try my best. We discussed these at the Personnel Committee meeting yesterday. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated hereafter. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board, Gladys Marie Harris, Easton, PA, term to expire 6/30/23. Children, Youth and Families Advisory Board, Reverend David Goss, Wing Gap, PA, term to expire 3/22/24. And Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Edward Nelson, Citizen Rep, Mont Bethel, term to expire 12/31/25, so introduced.
Thank you. Are any of those folks here this evening that want to be recognized? Is there any discussion regarding this matter?
I just have a concern with the appointment of Ed Nelson. We know that he's been here several times with his, you can't hear me, okay? I'll speak louder. Ed Nelson has been here several times advocating for the RLP. My concern is that as a citizen appointment, he might have some interests that I'd like to learn more about. It's my understanding that Ed happens to be coming to the Economic Development Meeting next month and I would just like to hold off on voting on him, just him, until we hear what he has to say at the Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll second it. I'll second the motion that I wanted to make, but thank you. It was a motion to table, right? Okay, because that's the one that I wanted. Okay.
So there'll be no discussion and that will not be considered as an appointment this evening? So we'll be voting on the other two? Oh, we have to vote on the motion, sorry. Please, let's vote on the motion to table the appointment.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gofredo?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
No.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Motion fails by a vote of five to four.
Yes, Mr. Heckman.
Could you be, Mr. Sarinski, I was, I'm really confused. Why exactly don't you think he should be put on?
It's not that I don't think, it's that I wanted to suspend that vote on him specifically until I heard what he has to say at the Economic Development Meeting next week because he is going to talk about the economic interest that his municipality has on the RLP project. That has a lot to do with planning and being on the Planning Commission. So I just want to hear a little bit more. And I didn't say I didn't, wasn't going to vote for him. I said I wanted to hear more. So it was just a request to suspend the vote on him specifically until he comes to the Economic Development Meeting.
The vote's been taken, so.
So it's a moot point, eh?
Well, and, and my concern is that we did review all these appointments yesterday at Personnel, so I wish it would have been brought up yesterday because I, we might have been able to delay until April 7th. But because it wasn't brought up yesterday, that's why I'm voting no today because we had ample time to discuss it at that meeting yesterday.
Well, I did have a night to think about it and I don't think that we should have to vote on everything right away if we have, you know, a moment. I like to be, what do I want to say? I like to be thoughtful and intentional with what I'm doing. So thank you. It's all right.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kuzic?
Just a request, would it be possible to vote on him separately from the other two?
Okay, so then. Need a motion, need a second, need to vote that way.
If you make it, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to vote on him separately.
And I'll second.
I know, let her write, let her, let her do her thing. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, voting on the motion to separate Mr. Nelson from the rest of the appointments.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Okay, now we're going to vote on.
Connect.
I'm being advised, just give me a minute. Okay. Do you have a point, Mr. Myers?
Do you have a point, mister?
I appreciate the mister. I was going to make a motion that we vote on the two by themselves to make it more expedient. Oh, you're dangerous.
Do we need a second?
Second.
I'm being advised by clerk that we don't need a motion to do that since we've just made a take. So can we have the vote on the two?
Go for it.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
That portion of the resolution was adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Now we'll vote on the appointment to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Gofredo.
Is there any discussion because?
If you'd like to have discussion, I will entertain that.
So I, I know Ed Nelson personally, being from the Slate Belt. He's served in the community for decades. Very, he's an upstanding citizen. I understand the hesitation, especially if it's counter to, you know, the wishes of something else, but I think it's good to have balance on the planning board. I think we have all like minds, all going to be pushing the same agenda. And I think Ed Nelson's priorities are for, you know, for the region, for the area that he's served for many, many years.
Thank you.
We are discussing, right?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait till your request. Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, and I, I respect your reservations. I mean, we've all, but I mean, it's so hard to get volunteers for these things. I mean, it's, it's, it's non-paid, it's time and I truly appreciate individuals who are willing to step up and volunteer. Now, I don't know Mr. Nelson well, but I mean, as far as his, what agenda he may or may not, he may or may not have. I mean, frankly, everybody going on all these boards may feel one way or the other, but I think that I agree with Mr. Gofredo in the sense that I'm not sure what this is about, honestly. I, I still don't, but that being said, I, I think there's enough people on that board that it's not going to be harmed by a very difference of opinions. It is the Planning Commission for the area. So that, that's why I'm supportive of an. So that's why I'm supportive of an individual unless there's an extreme reason. That's all.
Mr. Giovanni.
I've known Ed Nelson for 45 years. I know he's very out front, doesn't... He's a very good person. He went to my church. We went to Sunday School together. Known him very well. Knew him when he worked for Sprint. I have no reservations. He'll vote like he'll be.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yep. I am not at all questioning the integrity of Mr. Nelson. I know him not for 45 years, but I do know that he is a gentleman that comes in every time we talk about RLP. And I do know that he is an individual who has advocated on behalf of RLP, and I want to know why. I also know that he's an individual who is the township manager where they had a text amendment voted on that allowed for the developer to do whatever they wanted to on that property. So I have some questions and reservations about what his intentions are on the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. And to the point of Mr. Heckman, I know at least five people, some of which are in this room, who would want to be on the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. So it's not a position that we're trying to scramble to fill. There's people that are literally chomping at the bit and wanting to. And I just want to ask Ed a few questions, and I wanted to hear about what he had to say in the Economic Development Meeting. That's it. I think Mr. Ed Nelson is probably an upstanding person who has the best intentions for his community. But we all have our best intentions here. We all think that we are doing the right thing, because if we didn't think that we were doing the right thing, then there would be something very wrong with us, because we would have malintent. And so I'm not judging Mr. Nelson. I believe that he is probably a very good person. I just had some questions. So I will be voting no, because I didn't get that opportunity. So thank you.
Mr. Lot.
Yes, as a person that's sat on the Planning Commission for nearly a decade, I got to thank anybody that's willing to sit on that board. And I agree, Tara, it's an important board, but it's also a very large board. It's a very diverse board. So you have a lot of different people with a lot of different points of view, which is great, which is important. So I didn't have a problem with Ms. Sarinski having, you know, that's why I voted in favor of your table, but I will be supporting Mr. Nelson, just because he's been involved in the community. He knows the Slate Belt. Do I agree with everything he says? Absolutely not. Do I agree with some of the things he says? Absolutely. So, you know, I'm going to support him. I think it's good to have diverse people on that board. I agree with you, Tara. Ms. Sarinski, you're still going to get to see... I'm going to bring him in, because like I said, I like to hear both sides of the story. We're going to bring him in, and he's going to explain to us about the economic advantage of Upper Mount Bethel.
That's good.
Next one, so next meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to have to sit with him.
So I just, I will be supporting him, and, you know, I appreciate all the people that have volunteered for these positions, given their time to serve our community in these positions is huge. Not everybody's willing to do that. Being I sat on that board for 10 years, it takes away from your life. It takes away from your family. It takes away from things that are... How do I say this? More pleasurable, per se, but it's about giving back to the community. So for that, I thank all three of these nominees. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this matter? Mr. Myers?
I will tread lightly. After hearing some of my colleagues up here, I don't have a problem backing this guy, because sometimes you've got to believe in the people that you're sharing this table with. And there's been times that I've expressed my opinion on things, and they've taken me for my word. And that's good enough for me from time to time, most of the times. But that being said, I will approve Mr. Nelson, because I believe in some of the things my friends up here said, and it ain't got nothing to do with politics.
Thank you. John, it's you or me. You got anything to say?
Me either.
He's like, no, no!
Mr. Heckman.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Adopted by a vote of six to three. This portion of the resolution.
All right.
Okay.
Then that's it for this resolution, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Next. We have the consideration of executives amended appointment terms resolution, Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce this resolution?
Sure. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the terms of the following, excuse me, confirmed individuals shall be amended as indicated hereafter. Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley, business category. Heather Cardona, Bath, term to expire 6/30/24. And Joint Labor Management Business Appointment, William McGee, Northampton PA, 6/30/24, term to expire. So moved.
Any discussion regarding this appointment? I believe this is just a switch of category. Thank you.
To what?
Really?
We just switched and make?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I know William McGee, and I think he has the utmost integrity. And I think he will do a fabulous job on the Joint Labor Management. Yeah.
Can we get the vote, please?
Call for the vote, please.
Just to clarify, we're not voting to appoint them. We're only changing the terms.
Terms. I got it.
Please call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of small business grants through the American Rescue Plan Resolution. Mr. Myers, will you introduce the resolution?
Now, therefore, it be hereby resolved by the County of Northampton that the recommended grants Exhibit A are approved, that the county exec... of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute any and all necessary grant agreements, and applicants not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. We discussed this yesterday, and I was part of this entire selection, and I have no problem with it. And Mr. G, if you want to speak, you were part of the two.
Yes, I was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Giovanni. Go ahead.
Yes, I was, and it was good to see that there were some farmers on this list for that.
Any other discussion regarding this matter? We reviewed this yesterday, but you had...
Yeah, and we did, and I just was curious. If this is approved tonight, how much money is left in this pot?
$300,000.
Approximately $335,000.
Thank you.
Did I call you the wrong name? All right, keep messing with me. If I... Yeah, right.
Too many Johns.
Oh, JP. No, he's JP.
Mr. Kuzic, bring us back.
Yeah, real quick, I'd like to thank the committee for the work they've done, and I'd also like to say that I won't be supporting these grants when the next tranche of money is put forward. We have too many other needs.
And I said it last night, and I'll say it again. Kudos to Rebecca Sanchez for being the ace on this project and really knowing all these businesses, and also our collaboration with Jessica at the Chamber, because it's been nice to be able to work with them and reach out to these businesses and get to know what's available in the county. Any further discussion? Any concerns about anyone on the list? Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of support for the Joint State Government Commission to Study Long-Term Care Facilities Resolution. Mr. Lot, will you do this resolution? I should have checked to see if you had your glasses.
Now, therefore, it be resolved... Mr. Myers? Now, therefore, it be resolved that Northampton County Council does authorize the Northampton County Executive to support and take part in the Joint State Government Commission to research the impact on staffing needs of the Commonwealth long-term facilities as they pertain to the spending of Medicare funds, including wage measurements against inflation, ratio of staff nurse to contract nurses, and the need for certified staff to support our vulnerable senior living in long-term care facilities. So introduced.
Thank you. Can we have discussion regarding this? I believe this was brought up at the Human Services Committee the other day for CCAP, so it's a statewide project. But I don't know if you have any more to say about it. I just know that they did a whole presentation for us. This is happening, because everything's happening across the state.
I think one of the things that, once we get this report, it may obviate the need for us to expend any of our money on studying what's going on, because this is the heart of the matter, right? And if we get these answers, I think we'll know what we need to do moving forward.
Yes, Ms. Sarinski.
How long will this study take?
They didn't state it.
They didn't give a window of time.
Mr. Gofredo? Wait, wait, wait. Are you finished? I'm sorry.
Well, my concern is that our needs are immediate, but like, we need money now. I'm going to vote for this, because I know that this is a good thing, but we still need some answers now. Yeah.
Mr. Gofredo?
Touching on what Tara said, I'm going to vote for this as well, because everything, you know, will be helpful, but I do think our needs are immediate, and this will be a more permanent solution to an immediate action that we need to hopefully take in the coming weeks and the next committee meetings.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of matching funds awards through the Livable Landscape Grant Program Resolutions. There are three, Golf Farm and Plainfield Trail, Two Rivers Trail, and the Norbath Trail Gap. Ms. Sarinski, will you introduce the Golf Farm and Plainfield Trail Resolution?
Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the Golf Farm Preserve Phase One Development Grant Application to the Pennsylvania DCNR. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscape Program, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. The Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete the Northampton County's obligations in this project. The signature page for the grant application and grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of the signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. If this official signed the signature page for grant application and grant agreement prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the dating of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page for grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant grantees' executive signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in Paragraph 2, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? This was brought up in the EELU.
Yeah.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we'll have the Two Rivers Trail. Ms. Sarinski?
Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the Two Rivers Trail Gap 9A Grant Application to the Pennsylvania DCNR. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. The Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. The signature page for grant application and grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. If this official signed the signature page for the grant application and grant agreement prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page for grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant grantees' executive... executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in Paragraph 2, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. So moved.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the Norbath Trail Gap. Ms. Sarinski?
Can't just say ditto, can I? Now, therefore, it's hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the Norbath Trail East Extension Grant Application to the Pennsylvania DCNR. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. The Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation, or his heard designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. The signature page for the grant application and the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. If the official signed the signature page for grant application and grant agreement prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the signature page and grant application and grant agreement signed by the above official will become the applicant grantees' executed signature page for the grant agreement, grantees' executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in paragraph two, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. So moved. That's awesome.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of support for PFOS?
PFO and PFOS.
I can't even say it. PFOS/PFAS Regulation Resolution.
Yep.
Ms. Serinski, you say that three times fast. I'm not gonna.
I got it. Whereas Pennsylvania is currently proposing rules to adopt maximum contamination levels for toxic PFO and PFAS as published in the February 26, 2022 Pennsylvania Bulletin. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows by Northampton County Council. The above whereas clause is set forth herein are made a material part of this resolution. Northampton County Council supports rulemaking by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to adopt maximum contaminant levels for PFO and PFAS as published in the February 26, 2022 Pennsylvania Bulletin for the Protection of Its Citizens and Environment. That Northampton County Council requests the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to proceed promptly to adopt maximum contaminant levels for the protection of Pennsylvania residents and the protection of the environment. Northampton County Council further resolves that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to all legislators serving Northampton County.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding this matter? Mr. Kuzick.
I had a quick question. Is this a public comment period for this regulation? Is that why you're putting? Okay, thank you.
So the regulation stipulates that the current level is 70 parts per trillion, and they're lowering it to 14 parts per trillion, which aligns Pennsylvania with the surrounding states.
Okay. And as part of the change in the regulation, the state has to have a public comment period.
Right.
And that's what this process is all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have consideration of the request for a public hearing from PennDOT regarding the industrial park in Upper Mount Bethel Township Resolution. Ms. Serinski, will you introduce the resolution?
Sure will. Whereas Northampton County Council is aware that this industrial development project will impact not only Upper Mount Bethel Township but surrounding and adjoining municipalities, including but not limited to Portland Borough, Washington Township, and Lower Mount Bethel. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council as follows. All applications to PennDOT for this project be considered after public proceedings to ensure public participation, input, and comment. The public proceeds referenced in paragraph one be held after a minimum of 30 days. Public knows to ensure public participation, input, and comment. A copy of this resolution will be forwarded to all Pennsylvania state legislators serving Northampton County.
Is there any discussion regarding this matter? Mr. Gofredo.
As I mentioned in the committee meeting, I do believe that traffic study has gone in front of PennDOT. It's been approved as during all normal approval processes, and this has been approved by the Upper Mount Bethel Township Supervisors Board. I do believe that we are overreaching by trying to stall a project that's already been approved and properly zoned in a community that desperately needs commerce, industrial production, and industrial zoned area. I'm going to be voting no on this resolution.
Any other? Mr. Lot?
Yeah. It's an interesting case up there. We've heard so much from residents about this area up there, and it's been, you know, in the paper, nonstop, developers suing citizens, you know, citizens groups. There's been a lot of activity around this. Council, some time ago, Northampton County agreed with the LERTA up there so we could create good-paying jobs in our northern tiers. That is extremely important, creating those jobs. I was very pleased with what has been put up there. I think it's Laqued. I mean, the good manufacturing jobs that have gone up there so far. You know, and that was the idea that we had, putting some good jobs up there for the people. That being said, I don't trust any developer because I worked with a lot of developers, and I've been promised a lot of things from developers. And so I don't, what this resolution is asking for is, we can't demand anything, but what we're asking for is just another look at this thing and make sure that the numbers are correct. I mean, these were numbers, the numbers were high that the developer gave us, quite frankly, but the numbers are good. So PennDOT doesn't have to listen to us, but I think in response to the amount of citizen outcry, if there's nothing wrong with this project, there should be nothing wrong with looking at this project. So I'm going to support it, but I do support smart development up there, and I want to see it happen because I want to see nice jobs up there, but it's got to be the right development, you know, and it needs to have, you know, input. I think, unfortunately, I think probably part of the problem that we got so nasty up there is just bad communication. And sometimes developers don't always want to communicate as much as they should, and it ends up coming around biting them later because it always does. You have to have the community involved when you do these projects, and if you try to go around them or beside them or aside them, it makes for a situation like we have up there. I am going to be supporting this study. I'm also bringing Ed Nelson in to explain the economic impact of this next week. So I want to see jobs up there. I think that's why the county put LERTA up there, but they better be the right jobs that fit in the area, and I think anything they do to hold a developer, any developer, a little more accountable doesn't hurt the local township. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Serinski.
Yep. I think it's definitely important to create jobs, and we want to make sure that when we put in development, it's smart development, and that we're doing it right, and that we hold the developer accountable. I definitely agree with Mr. Lot that we have had a huge outcry from the public, and I believe that this might satisfy some of their some of their needs to understand the project better. Right now, we have a traffic study that was done by McMahon. It was paid for by the developer. The PennDOT study is either going to support that or it's going to show that there might be something else to look at. But if that study was good, just like Mr. Lot said, this is just going to prove that it is to the public that has been wanting more information and wanting verification. And I think this will settle a lot of things if we can do this.
Mr. Myers.
Just a short comment. I work with several people who live up that area, and they pretty much told me this is a done deal. And if it's a done deal, only thing this does is try to get some things done. But I have to agree with my esteemed bald colleague next to me that this definitely is important because we have to get jobs and make sure we're getting good jobs. So I'll be supporting it, but I'm in line to make sure we get some jobs.
Mr. Heckman.
I mean, this is really like a lot of things we do. This is, everything's been done up there that the developer has to do, whether we like, and believe me, I'm not a fan of developers. They always overpromise and underproduce. We got all the warehouses sticking around. You know, there's nothing we can do, and we're always told, well, you know, you can't do anything. So, I mean, this has been, gone through all the state stuff already, right? You're asking that they do an additional study of traffic. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess I could support it. I don't think PennDOT is going to do whatever PennDOT doesn't want to do. I mean, we can send it to them. I would ask my good friend, Mr. Gofredo, or Mr. Giovanni. Mr. Gofredo.
Looking right at me.
Well, you know, you're both young handsome men.
Yeah.
And I mean, I confuse, I confuse the two of you because the ladies up here tell me, you know, two of the best-looking men up here, so I have to take their word for it. But the thing is.
Just stop.
All right. Anyway, that's your neck of the woods, and I always appreciate and I ask your advice and questions about, and I know that area is looking for jobs, and that is zoned to do that. So what's your sense of where everything's at? Because you represent that area specifically.
Alls I want to say is about PennDOT. I worked with them when we were building the new Y and Pernardo on Pennsylvania Avenue, and we had a hard time just being the citizens trying to talk to PennDOT to do what he wanted them to do, and they didn't listen to us. They kind, you hit it right on the head. They do what they want to do. These are what you got to follow, and this is what they're going to do. And it's just the way that agency works. Now, I'm in favor of development because I think that area does need some jobs. It really does. My in-laws live in Evergreen Village. Mr. Cole knows where Evergreen Village is. It's an Evergreen Village 50 over. They have trailers, single and double trailers. They're in their 80s. You just can't not be having no tax revenue. It's just not going to be good for them. How can they support it? And that's why I think this is, the development should be good. I agree. I don't trust the developer no more than I can see him. He's been shaky. I will say that. I wish it was a different developer, honestly. I really do. But it is what it is, and that's my feeling on it.
Got it.
Any other discussion?
No.
I have a comment. It's more of a question, but so this is not a public hearing that is already scheduled, correct?
No.
There has been a public hearing there on this project.
There has not been a public hearing for PennDOT.
All right. Not for PennDOT, but there have been other public hearings.
For the DEP. Those are two different things.
All right. So this doesn't, my concern about this is like other things that we've done. I don't know that it has any teeth. Because the citizens are here and they want us to support them, that's why I'll do it. But like everybody else has said, so we give it to them, and they go, thank you, and they may never do it. So, you know, I wish it, you know, if it was something that they had already done and they had requested, and then we were backing them, I would feel better about it than I do. But it is what it is. So I just need to say my piece on it. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing, that when we do ask for these things from the DEP or PennDOT, they don't just push them aside because they have had an outcry from the public too. This just adds a little weight to what the public outcry is and say, they've gone a step higher and asked for a little bit more leverage, and we're giving them that, and we're letting them be heard.
Mr. G. Ovani.
I have a question on it.
Go ahead.
And I know there's a supervisor here for Lower Mount Bethel.
Yeah. Two.
There's a quarry down on, in Mount Bethel. And I agree with you. The trucks come down there tremendously often, but that quarry's been there over 100 years, and nobody's, PennDOT hasn't stopped anything. That's their problem. That's what's going to happen. You're going to look at it and say, yeah, that's another development.
Mr. Kuzick.
I don't understand.
Mr. Kuzick.
I see our public works director.
Just one second. So everybody can stop this.
You see, our public works director is here, and I'm just curious to know, are there any county bridges that are affected by this project?
Because that was alluded to earlier in the discussion. Mike's like, I don't want to get up tonight.
Oh, Mike.
He stayed here all night. I wanted to.
I'll find a way. I assure you. I mean, it wouldn't be on any direct routes, but they always find a way to our county bridges.
So the bridge that was alluded to earlier this evening, that is not a county-owned bridge?
That's a PennDOT bridge.
Thank you.
Okay. So no direct impact that you see?
They shouldn't be on our bridges. No.
Okay.
It better not be on our bridges.
And, you know, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And the reason why I brought
that to your attention is because I understand the citizens' concerns, but ultimately, this falls under the local municipality, their saldo, their zoning, the MPC. Vote out your township supervisors if you don't like them.
They did.
Well.
All right, all right, all right.
I mean, that, to me, I understand, and I agree with you, but I just, I don't see the jurisdiction at this level. So, and I also think you should approach your state representatives and state senators, and they're the ones that should be approaching PennDOT to conduct this. I just, I agree with you, but I just don't feel like this is our jurisdiction.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, and I'm going to support it, and I don't want to sound like the crotchety-ho guy who's, I am going to support it because I would love to have PennDOT check it out. Based on my long experience, I, my problem is I always hate to give people false expectations or unrealistic expectations of what we can accomplish or we can do. I mean, we can send the resolution, and I'll vote, I'm sure it'll get a majority vote, but I think what's been said by some people up here, in my history, sometimes it strikes a spark, and for your sake, I hope it does, but I got to be truthful and say 99% of the time, it doesn't. But, you know, I mean, who knows? You could be that 1%, so I'll support it.
Any, Mr. Myers?
No.
Calling for the vote. It's 8:30.
Mr. Myers.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kuzick.
No.
Adopted by a vote of five to four.
I'm not going to do that. That's, what?
Is there any other new business to discuss this evening? Hearing and seeing none, let's move into council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports to be done this evening? Mr., we'll start here and work around.
I had a human services committee meet, no, I had a personnel committee meeting yesterday. I've been taking like the drowsy sinus stuff, so you have to excuse me. I had the personnel meeting yesterday and the fruits of which we voted on tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Serinski.
Yeah, we had an EELU meeting. We passed every single resolution that we did in that meeting. Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody supporting our energy, environment, and land use committee. Thank you.
I'm going to sneak in, then I'll let you, and then I'll meet. I had a finance committee meeting yesterday. The fruits of our labor were all completed here this evening. Thank you very much. Mr. Myers.
We had a court of correction meetings, and some things were brought up. Some things weren't settled, but as it stands right now, it was a good meeting, and we're moving on.
This afternoon, we had a governance committee meeting, and we discussed three agenda items. We discussed the IT study or the IT upgrades to the room. We'll be moving forward with an RFP after we work with our current IT provider to discuss some of our needs. The second consideration was a pay study, and we discussed the parameters of what we'd like to see on the RFP. That will be discussed on April 7, and what I'm asking from all of council members is that in writing by April 1, if there's something that you want discussed in that pay study, that you put it in writing, submit it to Ms. Zembo so that we can review it to create the resolution. Last and not least, we did discuss Greysdale operational study at this meeting. Chase Cannon was available to us by phone. He did a very nice presentation and helped us frame some of our concerns. We have some ideas of direction that we'd like to go as a result of that conversation, and I'd like, again, by April 1, everybody to frame their questions, their concerns. I'll even state, for the sake of your knowledge, the kind of things that came up were the two versus the four people in a room model, the four-to-one PPD, the financial considerations, and especially analyzing things like bad debt, analysis of the revenue and the expenses of the home, morale, work environment, and a satisfaction survey. Are we capturing all available dollars? And are we providing long- and short-range planning and general facilities information? So those are some of the topics, but if there's something we missed that you have a deep feeling about, please write it down, and we will include it in the RFP, again, to be presented to council on April 7. So what we'll do is we'll do the resolution to do the RFP, and then we'll then send that out to bid. And I believe that is all. We did it governance. It was a good meeting. Is there any liaison report? I was present at the Discover Lehigh Valley Board Meeting. It's always interesting. What I think I gained the most out of is understanding how the Lehigh Valley stands up compared to other areas in terms of tourism. They were very optimistic. The numbers for the month of January were returning to pre-COVID numbers. Price per hotel room is fluctuating, but we are still one of the top markets. They did a presentation on how they're redoing some of their messaging, changing some of the colors, so they may come here and do that presentation for us. But it's just good to know that the Lehigh Valley, and I guess we did this pilot with other areas so that we could be part of a bigger Discover Pennsylvania package, and it has borne some fruit. So they're looking to continue to do that, to bring revenue. And that, all that stuff directly funds our hotel tax, which allows us to give money to projects, so it's all for the good of the order. So that was on March 8, I believe. And is there anything else? Council clerks report.
Nothing.
Council solicitors report.
Nothing.
So again, the date of April 1, deadline for those reports, and the last thing I have to announce is that on April 2 meeting that we have, I want to say April 15, is that? April 21, before council, at 3:30, we will have a meet and greet with the judges at a place and the time to be more refined at that point in time.
Judges, judges?
Yes. Yes, they like, they want to meet us, and they want to talk to us. We did that before, but it's time for us to meet the judges, so save the date.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say now for the record, I will not be at that meeting, the council meeting or otherwise, because I'm going to be at JFK Airport picking up my son from Japan.
Well, that's lovely.
I'm going to use point of personal privilege to do that.
I'm going to tell the judges that you didn't want to be there. No, I'm kidding.
You can tell them whatever you want.
Thank you all for your patience and for your understanding of our need to due process this evening. I appreciate everybody that came out and how you held your decorum in this meeting. And with that, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Oh, my God, all in favor? Aye. And thank God Gonzaga won, or I would have been ripping this up and throwing it at somebody.